Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, tonight, Wednesday, April tenth, twenty twenty-four, Mowbridge City Hall. Heather is not here to take minutes or write anything down. I will do the best I can, so everybody bear with me. So I will start with the roll call. Uh, Carlson? Chemnitz?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Reichert?
Here.
Cerny? Mound?
Here.
Okay, uh, next we have Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Kyle to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, up next, we have Adopt the Agenda. Uh, are there any additions or corrections or anything we need to take off the agenda before we get going? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion, and I will repeat who did it, so we can record the minutes. So, okay, I'll ask for a motion. Motion by Reichert. I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Second by Chemnitz. To, uh, adopt the agenda. And since Jade's on the phone, I'll call the roll. Mound?
Here, yes.
Okay, uh, Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, next, approve minutes. Uh, in your packet, we have the March thirteenth regular minutes. Uh, if there's no additions or corrections, I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Chemnitz.
Second by Reichert.
Second by Reichert. Um, call the roll, please. I'm sorry. Sorry, alright, I'll get with it here. Uh, Mound?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we have no unfinished business, so I'll take us into new business. Um, first item is Billy Joe Beheeler. Um, but, so if you wanna come up to the podium, kinda where's? Okay, um, just one second. I, I did get special permission. I wanted to take this time. I wanna introduce somebody. I think this is the first time you've been to probably one of our council meetings, uh, but you're the one that reached out to me first, gave me a call and said, "Thanks for your fire trucks for coming up to Kennel." We had a good discussion, and I actually went up to, well, one of your meetings, so... Uh, that person that's with us tonight is, uh, Standing Rock Tribal Chairwoman Jan Alkire. So, she's in the back of the room, so... So, if you wanted to come up, that's my version of the events. Um, I got an email that said this person called looking for you, and I thought it was a practical joke. So, anyway, if you wanted to say just a few words quick.
Sure. Well, uh, thank you, thank you for allowing me to come and visit, uh, your tribal, uh, your council. Um, as the mayor said, he has, he come to our tribal council. I think it was, uh, you know, we had him there. We stayed a few hours and we got a chance to visit. But I wanted, um, folks to know, it was, it was very interesting. We have, we have an issue at Standing Rock. We don't, we, we do not, we lack a fire department that can respond like that, and so when we had a, a fire at a residence out in the country, um, being the new chair, I had only been on a few months, uh, well, probably about eight months at the time, and, um, and just so you know, I've been the tribal chairwoman for Standing Rock going, um, two years and six months. And so I'm in my third year. Next, uh, October, there will be, um, a new chair that will be on board, and so uh, I got a four-year term, um, to be the tribal chairwoman at Standing Rock. Um, but anyway, I gave a, um, called nine-one-one, and the reason why I'm sharing this is to thank you, because nine-one-one responded. They already knew about the fire. They already knew about the residence. They already said trucks were being dispatched, and for me, as a tribal leader, and thinking about that, I was like, oh, thank goodness, you know, it's a residence out in the country, and so everything turned out, unfortunately, a fire's a fire, right? So, um, the next day, um, I called the mayor, and, um, he, he wasn't in, but I left a voice message letting him know, "This is the tribal chairwoman of Standing Rock. Would you please give me a call?" Of course, the mayor didn't know what, why is the tribal chair of Standing Rock calling me? I didn't hear from him for a few days, which I ca- that's okay, everyone's busy, and when he called, he's, his voice was like, uh, "Yes, this is Mayor Cox," and I was like, "Wow, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I, I called to thank you." "I wanna thank you for, um, the nine-one-one service, and also thank you for dispatching your fire department, um, so quickly responding. Um, we're really grateful here at Standing Rock." And he was just quiet on the phone, and he said, you know, um, "I guess I wasn't really expecting that," and, and, and for me, I'm like, oh, you don't expect, "Thank you," but he said, "No," I mean, a- and I don't know if I'm getting this right, but I remember you saying, "I've never had a tribal leader, that any of the tribal chairs ever reach out to me like that to say thank you," and I think it's just from you, your, um, being the mayor, that no one has done that. So, that got me thinking, and I said, you know, maybe, maybe it's time that, um, and I would love for you to come and meet our council, 'cause we have a council of seventeen. We have eight districts on Standing Rock. We straddle both North Dakota, South Dakota. Our tribe is pretty unique in regards to, we work with the governor of North Dakota and the governor of South Dakota. We have these six congressionals, and it was really, a really good meeting in regards to talking with the mayor, and he brought your daughter, and, um, and understanding how the healthcare works at Standing Rock, how our government works at Standing Rock, and, and just, you know, we meet once a month, the first Wednesday of every month, so it turned out to be a really good meeting, and I share all this because I think it's so important, because Mowbridge is, you're our neighbor. You are our neighbor, and, um, McLaughlin and all these folks around us, and, and I just appreciate that we all help one another. I don't know, you know, I think history is history. In order for all of us to move forward in a good way as a people, as human beings, it's important that we stay together, and, um, we take care of one another. And so, we came tonight. I know the kids are here, and, um, Billy Joe's gonna share some, um, an important event for our people, but it's right here across the river, so I wanted, I wanted us to let you all know how, what is happening. It's a spiritual event and a historic, a, a celebration in regards to history of something that happened fifty years ago, which actually happened a couple hundred ye- over a hundred years ago, but, um, it's, it's really gonna be a nice thing, and I wanted the community in Mowbridge, so that's why we're reaching out, letting you all know, and, um, that's, that's about it, guys. I just wanted to let you all know. Thank you for allowing me to share.
And, and thanks for coming down, but yeah, I just thought while you were here, I'd take this opportunity, so...
And I welcome any of you all to come. If you would like to come, um, this young man back here, his name is Kendrick Eagle, and he is my External Affairs Officer. If you ever need to find me, or you would like to come visit us, um, in any way, just come visit us, as we can, um, show you our communities, um, or show you how our education system works, our healthcare, our law enforcement, and even, you know, we have a lot of things that we need to do, um, and it's always a struggle for us, but I think, you know, I be- I believe that we're going forward in a good way, so, but Kendrick Eagle is who you would reach out to if you ever need to come visit the tribe, or come visit me, or come and see the council, or come watch a council meeting, any of that too. So, okay, well, I'm sorry, guys, I just, this is my first time coming, so I had to throw it all in there. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Billy Joe Beheeler, right, or Beeler?
Beheeler.
Beheeler, okay.
It's a German name. My grandfather is from Texas, and my, uh, my mother is from Standing Rock. Uh, wanted to share, I wanna say, "Plemeiere to Chairwoman Alkire." I think these meetings are so important, and these connections are, that need to be made are extremely important, important considering you're the adjacent community to Standing Rock, and Standing Rock is a sovereign nation, so I'm used to seeing her, you know, work with nation-to-nation building, so it's really cool to see her at a local community meeting. I appreciate it, and we appreciate your support. Uh, Midakiapi, Billy Joe Beheeler, Machiapi, respectful greetings to everyone here. I am here as a representative of the International Indian Treaty Council. I'm also a citizen of Standing Rock Nation. I also wanna share that I grew up in Kennel, South Dakota, so I'm, you know, twenty, fifteen miles. Is that too low? I'm, um, I grew up in Kennel, South Dakota, so I grew up coming to Mowbridge quite often. I actually feel like I'm somewhat of a community member, um, played against the Mowbridge Tigers for many years. I used to shop at Gibson's. Yeah, and a ten, yeah, I've been around for a while here, so, yeah, right? Um, so, I just wanted to share that these important, you know, conversations need to be had, and I'm very thankful to have the opportunity to, uh, share this information with you all. The International Indian Treaty Council is very pleased to announce that we are convening the fiftieth anniversary treaty conference, defending our treaty rights to food, water, and health, so that our peoples will live wulakota umu chupikte in partnership with the Standing Rock Nation. The event will be held June twenty-first through the twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-four. It is open to the public. Um, we will have UN dignitaries, we will have UN affiliates, we will have people, dignitaries from other countries convening here at the bay. And it is at the bay, Mowbridge, but we put Mowbridge, South Dakota on there, so that people know the community that they will have access to for hotels, or anything that they need, gas, um, even flying in. I know we're gonna have a lot of influx coming from Aberdeen and Bismarck, so that's important to know as well. Um, we are going to be gathering at Woshla Ha Standing Rock, the Ochati Shakoa Treaty Territory. We are very grateful for the generous offer for Standing Rock to help assist and host us with this event. We look forward to coming together at the International Indian Treaty Council's birthplace and recognize and build upon our collective accomplishments, exchange experiences, knowledge, and share cultures, develop strategies in response to common challenges, and make recommendations to advance the rights, and highlight, you know, some of the work that we're going to be doing is highlighting, um, what has been done in the past, so the treaty, International Treaty Council was established here in nineteen seventy-four on Standing Rock, so it's a historic event. To highlight many of the historic advances achieved by IITC over the fifty years, we could not imagine holding this gathering anywhere else besides Standing Rock. And we're here to inform you all that my name is Billy Joe Beheeler. I am the onsite logistics person. My contact information is on the flyer. We will be having a series of panels, um, each day, and then they will have commission meetings, and at the commission meetings, everyone gathers and discusses issues and topics that they feel are important, not only local, but globally, all across the world. So, we'll have issues for food sovereignty, um, food sovereignty, land development, like just, there's so many issues, but when they all come together, they will decide what, at these commission meetings, what will be taken to the United Nations. So, I just wanna share, since the youth are here as well, thank you for coming. It's good to see you all here, Dayan Yahi. Um, there will be youth panels, and there is a youth council convening as well. So, there's an opportunity for you all to come and join and listen to the youth panels. I'm trying to think of, I think, other than that, thank you for your time. Thank you for, um, putting me on the agenda, and if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Say, does anyone have any questions or, or more discussion? Um, you know, we were meeting in the side room, and I'm just, I'm trying to take it all in, and you talk about UN and people coming from all over the world, and...
Yeah.
I'm gonna showcase you. You say we sell Mowbridge every day to the area. I, I think this region is gonna be seen by the world at, at this event, so...
Yeah, well, one big, one big area.
Yeah, speaking into the mic, Kyle, Heather's gonna have to record the minutes later, so... But anyway, no, I just, you know, took all that in, and I'm kind of excited to see this happen, and, and this part of the world, so...
Yeah, so are we, um, and just so you know, at the last one in nineteen seventy-four, the Declaration of Continuing Independence by the First International Indian Treaty Conference at Standing Rock was established. So, they took, um, they took it, they took the... There's so many things that they've done, amazing things. One of the, um, significant things is to go and advocate for indigenous ru- indigenous rights all over the world, and have that established at the UN. So, that is one thing that came from establishing the treaty council, and the treaty council consists of members from all across the world. They have different affiliates. You can look them up online. It's International Indian Treaty Con- Council, and they have, like, for example, I'm not an employee, but I'm a special projects consultant from our region, so I have the privilege of working with them. Their central office is located in Arizona, and they also have a, um, office in New York City. And they could not be here today, because they are preparing for, um, the permanent forum at the United Nations right now.
Okay, and, yeah, I would say if you have any other comments, concerns, questions, as we get closer, um, again, Heather's on vacation, but she's city administration, and I think you guys have already started the communications.
Yeah, I think just having a clear, common message with everyone, it's a, um, it's a event that's grounded in spirituality, um, and a lot of the individuals that are coming here are coming here to work, so we wanna make sure that, um, everyone's safe and they have a nice experience here. A lot, some of them have never been here before, and so that's really exciting as well to host our visitors, and just, you know, Mowbridge has, you know, I, I feel like I told you in the meeting, we talk about when we come to Mowbridge, sometimes during the carnival, or the Mowbridge Stampede, whatever you have, you know, there's always like a welcoming presence, where there's like, um, art on the windows. I know we talked to the Chamber of Commerce about that, but also just having uh, you, having a common message throughout the community that we have visitors coming, and what do we do when visitors come? How do we host? How do, how are we hospitable? Um, and how do we share this information out in a positive way? Um, and if you wanna do any more of your research on your own, feel free to. I, I just think it's really cool that we're able to bring everyone together again, and in celebration.
Okay, excellent.
Alright, thank you all. Alright, doksha.
Okay, thank you. Um, ne- up next, I'll take us to the Police Department. Chief Sean.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just have a couple things on tonight's agenda. The first thing, I'd like to ask the council to approve purchasing a twenty nineteen pickup instead of the Durango.
Okay, that's, um, in our packet. Uh, it's a twenty nineteen. I think at the last meeting, we'd approved two Durangos, but now, in the meantime, pickups available. So anyway, uh, if there's no other discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve the twenty nineteen pickup instead of a Durango.
So moved.
Yeah, motion by Chemnitz, second by Jensen. Uh, Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Next thing is to ask the council to approve a step increase for Police Officer Barrett Ren, increasing his hourly wage from twenty-three ninety-two to twenty-four fifty-six, effective April eighth of twenty-four.
Okay, uh, any questions or comments on the step increase for Officer Ren? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Reichert?
A second.
Second by Jensen. Uh, Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it?
Alright, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Um, next, Street Department. Okay, thank you, Chairwoman. Um, looks like the Street Department is not here. Information's in your packet. Looks like they're proposing to put in a new garage door down at the street barn, a total twelve thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars fifty-eight cents. Uh, it is a budgeted item. If there's no other discussion, I would look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Have motion by Chemnitz?
Second.
Uh, second by Mound. Uh, Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Um, Fire Department. Up next, we have Chief Doug.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, just a couple things tonight. First, um, need to approve Austin Stover as a volunteer firefighter on our roster. He'll be one of the wildland guys taking our, that new truck out, so we have to approve him onto the roster for the Fire Department.
Okay, um, so you're gonna need that in addition to the other one.
Well, he's on the list for the approval for the employees, but Heather said we needed to get him onto the roster as well for work comp.
Okay, so, let me write this down. You said Austin Stover?
Yes.
Okay, so I will look for a motion to add Austin Stover to the Fire Department roster, effective, do I wanna do it today?
Yeah.
E- effective today.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion by Reichert, uh, second by Chemnitz. Um, I'll go ahead and start at the other side table. Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
And then the other would be for, there's a, I know there's a list in the packet of the, for Justin Sadler, Colton Hunter, and Austin Stover. Two of them have two different rates of pay, depending on how our new truck is ordered. They pay different rates, so there's two different positions, I guess, for those two in there.
Okay, and all the payroll logistics was, we worked out depending on the truck through city administration.
How the truck, if it's ordered as a wild, as a tactical tender, it's one rate. If it's ordered as a type-three wildland engine, it's another rate for those two.
Okay.
Justin's will be the same, either way.
Okay, um...
It's a little confusing, but not really, more for Heather doing the payroll than anything else.
Okay, yeah, and, and the memo says, uh, please approve the hourly wages for the wildland fire crew. Loaded wages will be reimbursed to the city.
Yep.
Uh, looks like Justin Sadler, Colton Hunter, Austin Stover, uh, the wages as presented by Doug, based on what they'll be doing. Uh, there's no, if there's any discussion, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve, um, these wages, uh, and to be reimbursed to the city.
So moved.
Have a motion by Chemnitz.
Done yet?
Have a second by Mound. Uh, Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
You bet, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, miscellaneous items coming up. Uh, first item under miscellaneous, uh, public hearing and approval, uh, transfer of a liquor license. It is from the old wrangler, I believe. I'm trying to find where it's at here. It's the old windjammer, but anyway, within the license, they're reapplying and they're removing the second floor where the Chuck Wagon Restaurant is located. So, if anyone's confused on that, I probably confused you even more. But we're not moving a liquor license, we're not approving a liquor license, we're approving a new liquor license without the part that would be the windjammer, which is now the chuck wagon. So, there will be another license coming for that at a later date, so, uh, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone here to speak for or against, uh, this liquor license application? Okay, hearing none. Uh, if there's no other questions from the council, I'd look for a motion to go ahead and approve this transfer. Okay, have a motion by Jensen.
I'll second.
Okay, have a second by Mound. Uh, Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, up next, uh, approve cemetery deeds. Looks like there's four of them in your packet. I think we'll just approve all these with one motion. So if there are no questions or comments concerning cemetery deed transfers, I'll look for a motion to transfer.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Jensen, second by Chemnitz. I'll call the roll. Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
And Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Up next, we have application for abatement of property taxes, Mowbridge Economic Development, record number sixty-two seventy-seven. Uh, this property is exempt from tax. It looks like we will be refunding one hundred thirty dollars seventy-six cents. Uh, if there's no questions or comments, I would look for a motion to approve the abatement.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Reichert? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Chemnitz. Um, I'll go ahead and call the roll. Mound?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, next item, discuss and/or approve the petition request to waive a curb and gutter requirement. Um, looks like this is from Jake Selsor. Information's in your packet. Um, "I'm applying for a permit to build a fourteen-by-twenty-six woodshed building in my backyard. I had a cement slab contractor look at the location. He said the street and road, uh, fifteenth street east, west, dead ends at alley, and is a dirt road, therefore he cannot properly install the curb and gutter, uh, because he does not know what depth and location to install it before it gets graded and paved. I am asking for an okay to build this storage building and not to install curbing on a degraded road." Jake Selsor, uh, property address fourteen twenty-one North Main Street. Um, does anyone have a chance to go look at this?
I've looked at it.
Okay.
I think he's right.
Okay, so, yeah, he's asking for approval of a resolution uh, in the petition to waive that curb and gutter requirement, so, uh, does anybody else have any discussion, thoughts, opinions? Uh, Kyle says he's looked at it. You think he's doing the right thing? I mean, I think he is too, 'cause...
I think he's, there's just no, there's no reason to put it there. I thought, always thought it was an alley. I never knew it was a street.
Yeah, so, to have curb and gutter in an alley looking street, so, uh, if there's no other discussion, I guess I would look for a motion to approve the resolution waiving the curb and gutter requirement.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, looks like resolution, hope I get this right. Yeah, resolution twenty-four zero-three, waiving the curb and gutter requirement on fourteen, fourteen twenty-one North Main for Mr. Selsor. So I have a motion by Chemnitz, we have, or, I'm sorry, motion by Jensen. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Chemnitz. Any other discussion? Okay, Mound?
Yes.
Uh, Reichert?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Um, next item up is, um, approve moving the council meeting to May seventh at five-thirty. That's a Tuesday instead of a Wednesday. Um, it's me asking for that, because I will be heading to the East Coast on that Wednesday, so I will not be here, and coming up at that meeting, we do have a lot of heavy stuff coming up with our water and sewer, and and those are also my oral appointments, so if it's okay with the council, uh, I would request we meet Tuesday at five-thirty. Any, anybody got anything? Yes, no, okay with it? Okay, I guess we can do it by motion, so I'll call for a motion to, uh, reschedule that to May seventh at five-thirty.
Make the motion.
Okay, have a motion by Jensen, second by Reichert. Uh, if there's no other discussion, uh, Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Uh, Reichert?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that'll take us into discussion, information items. Um, in your packet, your financial report. Um, both sides of the financial statement are balanced, so if you got any more deeper questions on that, be, you can get with Heather next week. Um, building permits, list is in the packet. Uh, looks like we had five permits for a total of two hundred thirty-eight dollars, three hundred and, two hundred thirty-eight, three hundred and fifty-dollar total, uh, construction. Uh, if you got any questions, later, visit with Jackie. Um, events font update. Is MJ here by chance this time? Nope, okay. Uh, I'll just go ahead and read what she had to say. Uh, "We have one more month for pickleball, morning pickleball, coffee conversations, and movie nights and book club." Uh, "Mowbridge Aquatic Center participated in the PTO Carnival in March, and the booth was a big hit." Um, "Have been working with MYO to put together..." Have been working with MYO to put together spring and summer schedules along with track and softball concessions and an open house for the Kansas City Royals plaque dedication. We are working with the city and the school to finish up the twins grant dugout project. Our adult escape ru, our adult escape room was a hit and plan to do another one in the winter. Last week of April, I will tear down the, tear down and store away all pickleball and laser tag equipment until later in the fall. Uh, May will be a busy month with track and softball concessions, also will be working on getting the pool staff certified and cleaning, so we are ready to open for the season, May thirtieth. We have invited others in the surrounding communities to send their guards our way to get certified. If you guys didn't know, last month, I believe, we can now train lifeguard, so, um, I believe MJ pointed that out. April eighteenth will be the first day to call and set up for swim lessons, we normally have a fully booked summer of lessons. This year we have the American Red Cross, this year we have American Red Cross certified instructors, Phoebe Schmaltz, Sylvia, Sophia Overland and Grace Overland. And MJ will be heading to Bismarck and trained to be certified as a pool operator CPO, the certification will be good for five years. So as you can hear by that, we're wrapping up quite a bit, coming out of winter, getting ready for summer. And the aquatic center will take up all of MJ's time, so, uh, it sounds like we've had a pretty successful outing this winter. So up next on our agenda, public forum and visitors, do we have anyone who wishes to address the council at this time? Okay, uh, hearing none, I'll take us to payment of bills, uh, bills are in your packet. Um, looks like the grand total, three hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Uh, if there's no questions or comments concerning the bills, I would look for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Have a motion by Reichert, second by Kimnitz, Mound?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kimnitz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, uh, bills will get paid, uh, if there's no other business before this council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Kimnitz.
Second.
Second by Mound, I was gonna say, we get to stay here all night, do I get a second? Okay, Mound?
Yes.
Reichert?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kimnitz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, meeting is adjourned, thanks everyone. Thanks Jade.